Welcome to the Holyoke School Committee Meeting. It is Thursday, June 29th, and the meeting will start at 5:53 PM. Again, my apologies, a little bit of technical issues here. 5:53 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Pursue and it just, we're not going to go through the Pledge of Allegiance. We just did that. I just want to acknowledge that we did do that during the public hearing. So we're just going to go ahead and move on through. So pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. This evening, we do not have a student showcase, just so everyone is aware. Ms. Garcia, do we have any public comment right now?
No public comment.
Okay, great. We're going to go ahead and move on to Communications and Reports. And this is one of the resolutions that I needed to see on my computer. Does it still have my voice coming back at me?
Yeah, just me.
I'm not even in. Here I am. So my apologies, I just want to get this audio setting out the way. Hello? Nope. All right. So the first thing that's on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on the MASC bylaw proposal on resolutions. And so yesterday evening, I chaired the Resolutions Committee Meeting, and we went over some resolutions that were submitted by different school committees. And but this one was submitted, it's a bylaw proposal change, and it was submitted by the Legislative Committee, part of MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And what it entails, and I'll just give you something brief on it. So every year, members from different school committees come up with resolutions to bring forth to the Delegate Assembly. But it goes through the Resolutions Committee, and then it's voted on to pass forward to the Delegate Assembly in November at our annual conference. This is besides other resolutions that are submitted that like this evening that we're going to talk about for the Thrive Act that would go to the legislation. This is what we're asking MASC to push forward. So what this proposal to change the bylaw would be to limit it to three years of resolutions that are sitting there, right? So it may be things that we were already working on or things that may have already resolved. But the problem is that it's still there. The resolution is still there and live. So what this does is that it's for three years. The resolution will be something that MASC is working on or whatever. And then that's it unless, but it gives the opportunity for a school committee to come and bring it back or make an amendment to it or change it because things could change. Some things could have already been in the works and is already in the works to resolve that resolution, right? So that's what the bylaw proposal change is about. Now, originally, we needed another school committee to sign on to this and agree with it, vote on, you know, this bylaw proposal change in order for it to go to the Delegate Assembly. But after clarification, it could go to the Board of Directors, and we can vote on to pass it forward. But at least, Holyoke, if they're interested in showing support for this bylaw proposal change, that could be something that I can mention at my July 14th monthly meeting. So that's that on that. Ms. Wilson?
Do we have a copy of the proposal so we could review it?
Absolutely. So what I could do is I can sub, no, that is the Thrive Act that Ms. Wilson submitted. So what I'll do is I will send it off to you guys in August because remember, our annual conference isn't until November. So in August, I'll have my next meeting over there. And you know, I can just bring it forth that we'd support it. So that's what I will do. I will send that all to you guys, what it entails and what it looks like. Okay? No problem. Next on the agenda, we have the Thrive Act. And this was a request by a school committee woman, Ms. Wilson. I'm going to have her speak on why. She requested that this be put on the agenda, but at the same time, I reached out to those who were the creators of it. So we have members from the Massachusetts, I want to say it's the Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance, as well as a school committee individual from the Lawrence School Committee. So I will first pass this to Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you. So the Thrive Act was first mentioned to me, I think it was by Ann Brennan, who is an educator at Ian White School. She shared with me this information, and I've been doing some research on it. And I strongly believe that it's something that I support because it's really, the full title is "An Act Empowering Students and Schools to Thrive." The key issues that it speaks of, it speaks of replacing the MCAS graduation requirement with one that allows students' districts to certify that students have satisfactorily completed the coursework or mastery of skills. And then more importantly, which is close to my heart, is eliminating state receivership and reinstating democratic control of communities and school committees. And then establishing a new program, a new whole-child-centered system to really implement assessing, to implement it so we can assess our schools in a more holistic way rather than using the MCAS to rank our schools when we all know that there's only eight states in our country where standardized test is required for graduation. And there is no correlation between having a standardized graduation exam requirement and the actual academic achievement of a student. And really and truly, as someone who's working in a high school, I see the punitive effects really on a daily basis of the MCAS requirement for graduation, especially with students who are bilingual, are students who come from poverty, students who have learning differences. It's significantly impacting them not through high school but also their opportunities for a successful life after high school. So I just want to share with you that, you know, something I strongly believe in. I've given us, there's an MTA summary of the Thrive Act as well as the House Act with its number 495. And then the Senate, I believe it's, what is it, 296? No, 246. It's on both the state and the Senate docket. I do want to recognize that I do see that our representative Patricia Duffy has assigned on to the Thrive Act. So I do want to recognize that here.
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Garcia?
And so, yeah. And so just, and then just to clarify, I did put on our act, in the packet I gave out, a resolution. I do want to acknowledge that I did take the resolution from Somerville School Committee. So I want to recognize them for their hard work. And of course, this is something that's just a draft that we could, if we do choose to adopt it, we can always make language changes.
Sounds great. Ms. Garcia, real quick, can you pass me over? I'm still as a, I'm looking at this as a webinar. And then also, okay. Got it. And then also, I do want to say that they also sent us a resolution that we can also look at with, that you can plug in and also change. But those are things that, again, we can discuss all that. I'm just waiting for this to generate so I can acknowledge.
Do we have other speakers?
Acknowledge our speakers. Yeah.
Speakers?
So a motion to suspend?
I could, I was going to say, I could make a motion too. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and to have the speakers who are joining us to discuss the Thrive Act and how it was brought about, be allowed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. So how many do I have? Because I'm looking here. I, no, that's an interpreter, interpreter. I see one. Let me go.
If it's okay, Rachel, Rachel is joining us.
Wait a minute. Oh, yeah, there's Rachel Polliner. Okay. All right. Okay, great. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and welcome from the Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance. Are you, but I don't want to say your name wrong. So why don't you go ahead, introduce yourself, where you're from, and go ahead and talk to us about the Thrive Act.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for inviting us to share about the Thrive Act. I'm Vatsidi Sivansai, the Director of the Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance, which are the conveners for the statewide coalition for the Thrive Act. And in here with me today is Rachel Polliner. She is a very close organizational partner, and she also supports like another statewide organization. I believe Jonathan Guzman will try to join us any minute now. But we, you know, we have been working in on developing the Thrive Act, bringing in statewide partners from across the state on building a better accountability and assessment system that really centers our students and our families. And I wanted to apologize, we had soccer tryouts that were changed from yesterday to today. So that's why I'm in the car, but I'm parked. And I have my son back here. But, but yeah, so we're double, you know, multitasking as parents often do. But I also want Rachel to, if possible, to introduce herself before we jump into what the Thrive Act is.
Sure, can you hear me? Yes, okay. So I'm Rachel Polliner, as Vatsidi said. And I'm on the Board of Progressive Mass and a strong believer in the Thrive Act, and we are very involved in the Thrive Act Coalition. So I'm one of our people who's been very involved in different components of the Thrive Act. And I, long ago, was a high school teacher and have been working with many, many, many different schools for the past 40 years. So I see the impacts all over the place.
Yeah, the Thrive Act, I mean, it was born out of the, out of the real urgent concern that our communities tend to, you know, not have a voice or say in how policies are implemented and that those in state takeover districts don't have a pathway out, right? So to build a democracy that is like really reflective of our diversity and also reflective of our values and the needs of our students and to improve student outcomes, we really want to make sure that the implementation, the creation of policies and plans for our public education is created by those who are most impacted. The Thrive Act is an opportunity for us to do that, right? So there's like four clear parts. And we think of it as ending state takeover and providing support to the district in order to build a community-wide improvement plan, which is quite different from what it is currently, right? Currently, there's one decision maker, and that is a person who sits at the state. And I think that that is unfair, and it's not the values that we want to share with our students or our families about how a system for them is run for them, right? It should be run with them and really clearly create a path for success. And now, as you know, had mentioned earlier, there is our accountability system. While great intentions were placed in creating the, you know, leaning on standardized testing, the MCAS, it has over and over again prevented a barrier and a challenge and a harmful measure that doesn't really take in consideration the whole child. So it stigmatizes the child, the student. It stigmatizes the communities, right? Because it's not reflective of what the student and the family and the community can really bring to our democracy and building a better foundation for all of us. So the Thrive Act then also looks at, you know, ending the high school requirement for the MCAS and then building a statewide commission so that we can really evaluate and develop an assessment system that works best for our students. Those are the four chunks. Rachel, did you want to, are there other ones that you'd want to add?
Well, I think I just want to add. I'm echoing some. How about now? Oh, that's good, okay. So I think I just want to add a little bit more context that there's currently no path out of receivership, which is written into the law, actually. And it's logically no path out because the law doesn't include any local ownership or capacity building, leadership development. So how, where would it go back to? And it's, the state doesn't have the capacity to actually take over and run a school. So it is farmed out. So all the, the capacity building is done somewhere else. It's not done within the community. So that's not a long-term solution. So the goal of the Thrive Act is to have, the state does have a responsibility for all kids to have effective education. But there's no theory of education that says you improve schools by removing ownership, by removing parents and families and guardians, that you would distance decision-making from the people who know the kids. Everybody who really wants to improve schools knows you take a whole-child approach. You think about the support systems, the size of the classes. You think about the various services they're getting, the enrichment services they're getting. And so that's what the local stakeholder group would have to do. They would have to look at the root causes and identify evidence-based approaches for improving their school, which is what it should be anyway. So that's, I think, one of the things that obviously I get excited about with the Thrive Act, that we really should be improving schools with the practices that we know full well work.
And I think that there's a misconception that is floating around that I think is detrimental to us building a better assessment system for centering our communities. And that is the notion that this bill eliminates any type of metrics, which it does not. We still follow, we would still follow the federal standards. We still have the metrics to apply in understanding where our students are. It's just what it allows us to do is stop the barrier and the challenge from a student pursuing their career goals, whether that is vocational training after high school or a college degree. It also, you know, and even in a workplace, right? Like folks, folks want to see that you received a high school degree. The other thing is, is that it truly is, that statewide commission would be the first time in what, 30 years since the implementation of this standardized testing system that we would be able to evaluate and say like, look, here's what we learned. Here's what we know, right? So how do we build a better accountability system that gives us the tools that our communities need to improve student outcomes? And, and so, you know, this would be that opportunity. And there is a list of organizations, you know, that would, that are representative of a lot of service and advocacy and civil rights organizations that work on, work for our diverse communities across the state. And I think that if you look at it, they're not, they're organizations that you're probably very familiar with. So I think this is where the opportunity is. And I really hope that in you looking at the resolutions, I think you might have two in front of you. Look at how, you know, how it can really be tailored to help your community. Like you come with so much knowledge and experience that other folks in the Commonwealth might not see or understand. And so for folks like Rachel and I, we would love to hear from you, you know, even after today, because we're always, we always want to center like our most impacted communities, which is you all. And we want to hear like, what is, you know, the best way to approach in improving student outcomes? And so we, we really appreciate the time that you've shared with us. And we, you know, definitely would like to dive into conversation now or after, you know, share as much as we can, take away some things that Rachel and I can think about and give you some things that you can think about as well.
Thank you so much. I have a question, the person Julian that's on the other side, that's not Jonathan. Okay. Okay, all right. Are there any questions? We're going to go ahead with Ms. Brunel, then Mr. Collmore.
Is there a slated time that the legislature is supposed to actually vote on this? Or is it still in the, are you guys still trying to get it to that point?
There's not yet a slated time. It is a new legislation, new policy. So I think for us, what's most important is that we hear from our communities prior to the hearing. Yeah, so this is an opportunity for us to, to hear from you all. I think that the earliest it could possibly be, right? Because they're going to take a break here in July. It's probably sometime in late September, early October. But again, with the cycle of a new policy, it can take quite a while. But we're here to, you know, first get the information out to the communities and really hear, hear from folks.
You mentioned a hearing, do you know when that is?
No, unfortunately, I think that at the state level, dates are very mysterious until a few weeks before.
Okay, if you could keep us abreast of that information, that would be wonderful.
But in the meantime, there are some things that can be done. You're thinking about a resolution tonight, there's a sign-on form. There's a lot of people who don't understand it very much. So we're happy to do community forums. There, I think, will be signs and things. So there's more things happening. And there's some student things too, but I'm, Vatsidi could speak to those.
Mr. Collmore?
Yeah. On a three-year voting for this. In the meantime, something comes up that isn't to our liking or to the state's liking or whoever. Can that be, can that be changed before we wait for three years to, for something to happen? Should we have something in there that says we can require this to happen immediately and try to solve the problem immediately rather than wait three years to implement it?
Mr. Collmore, if I may, I think you're confusing the two things. The first thing Mildred talked about with the MASC was the three-year thing.
Okay, so, no, this is the Thrive Act. This is completely different than the bylaw proposal change that I presented that has to do with the bylaws for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. The Thrive Act is something completely different. It's not something that's part of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. This is something that's going around through communities about signing on or writing up their own resolutions, right? And it was mainly geared and started with a district that has been in receivership for almost 13 years. And we're not too far behind there. So that's what the Thrive Act is. So it's, it has nothing to do with the three years.
But we can say that the Thrive Act does specify for the districts currently in receivership, they get out within a year. And there is a process for that, that they make a transition plan that the state has to support with funding. If there's a superintendent to be hired, they help with the hiring process with funds to carry that out, et cetera. So the bill does respond, we're trying efficiently, to the districts who've been in receivership for so long, with no path out.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I was a little confused when you said there was no way out in the beginning, but you really just answered my question. There is a way out. There was a way in, so we need to find our way out. So I appreciate you answering that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Garcia?
No, just accepted, I was just going to make a motion to move that the resolution, that we support the resolution, support the Thrive Act.
Okay, so the resolution, just to clarify, that Ms. Wilson is using is the one that she sent us right here, where I can read it. So the public as well is aware, because this was not, or Ms. Wilson can read it because it was not part of the packet. So I want to make sure that they have it.
All right, so the, well, do we, do we need a second before we move on to reading it?
Second.
Okay. So, so then, and I do want to say I did borrow this from Somerville. So it's a resolution in support of the Thrive Act. Whereas access to a high-quality, publicly-funded education is a guaranteed right written into the Massachusetts Constitution. And whereas, an effective public education program meets the needs of students who present a variety of abilities and learning styles. And whereas, a successful system of public education nurtures and supports students and offers opportunities for growth along a continuum that begins in preschool and extends through higher education. And whereas, the goal of public education is to teach students how to be critical thinkers, engaged citizens, and lifelong learners. And whereas, the introduction of high-stakes standardized testing through the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System has undermined the most important goal of public education. And whereas, the punitive use of MCAS has restricted curriculum and narrowed the focus of education in our public schools. And whereas Massachusetts, I'm sorry, MCAS testing has unjustly targeted communities with underfunded public schools or state takeovers that have failed to improve student performance by any measure. And whereas, using MCAS testing as a high school graduation requirement has prevented or delayed countless students from earning a diploma, either interrupting or derailing education or career plans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Holyoke School Committee urges the state legislature to pass the Thrive Act, ending the use of MCAS tests as a graduation requirement and for purpose of placing school districts or individual schools into state receivership. And further, resolve that Massachusetts develop an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS tests.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. So that's the one that Ms. Wilson had submitted for you guys to consider voting on. The one that I, that I received, which was a template, right? So I'm going to be very honest, I know that we were going to talk about the Thrive Act. That's why I invited them to come to speak. So I'm gonna be very honest, I know that we were gonna talk about the Thrive Act, that's why I invited them to come to speak on it. But I didn't know we were gonna create a resolution today or, um, put forth a resolution. So this was something that it was to hear about it, think about, is this something that we want to create a resolution? Then I would have provided you that resolution they sent me and looking to see if you guys wanted to reword, change things. And then in our August meeting, um, do it. So you heard the one and you have it, right? Um, is it, do you want to hear the template one that I have? Or do you want to go ahead and accept? I don't know, you guys tell me.
Um, I say we vote on the motion. I'm more than willing to sign off with the resolution that was brought forward. I commend, uh, Committeewoman Wilson for bringing this to our attention. Um, obviously, I'm a huge advocate for not having standardized testing. And to tie this into receivership just is at the core of what we're trying to do here. So I fully support this. Uh, I would happily be the first yes if we're roll calling. To move forward with this now. Thank you for sending it in advance. I did have the chance to read it, so I feel comfortable, uh, moving forward with the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
What else, wanna add anything? Just gonna say, this definitely has me fired up. No, seriously, I think it, it's in, it is a path. And I love this third point here, establishing a commission to create new whole child systems of accessing our schools. Building on important experiments in our state and nation, which can be able to. The, the thing is here is, and this is not, I mean, at least my personal opinion, in no way, shape or form. You know, discrediting what we're already doing in the district at all. Um, you know, except that. And, and conversations with many folks, a lot of what we value and fight for in this country is. When it comes to public resources, is, you know, being able to self-govern and, and, and so forth. And so I think certainly this outlines a path to get us. Uh, to transition to local control, but also not just. You know, going back to where we were when we were in local control, but instead to be more proactive in how we. Appropriately address, hold things accountable, kind of adjusts in areas accordingly, so that we're building children up. Where they are, um, in their academic, um. Uh, I guess career to say the least. Um, so yeah, this, this is great, I think. I, I'm in full in support of this as written. I'm more than happy to support my colleagues on this board to. You know, if you want to review it more and come back in August, I'd be happy to rescind, just let me know, um, but I am ready to move forward with what's in front of us.
Did you have something, Mr. Ramal? I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Rivera Cologne.
This might be the professor in me, but I would like to see the template and, and have the opportunity. Cause I feel like, like the kid who went to ChatGPT and cheated on the resolution. I wanna be able to see what we had available to see. Maybe there's something else that represents our community that we're not thinking of that should be part of the resolution.
So right now we do have a motion, um, to move forward, um, with the, it was, I'm sorry. Please repeat, Ms. Garcia, what the motion was. You don't know it, okay. Uh, I know that what it was, was to accept.
Adopt.
Adopt.
The resolution in support of the Thrive Act.
Okay, so adopt the current resolution that was submitted forth by, um, Ms. Wilson. Um, in support of the Thrive Act, and we have it seconded, okay? So now we're gonna go ahead with the motion. Is there any further discussion on it? Um, I'm gonna go first with those that haven't spoken. Mr. Wallahan?
I make a motion to, um. amend the motion.
So now I have a motion to amend or to table the item? Which one is it? Uh, to motion to table it. So now we have a motion to table. Is there a second? And when we say table, are, are we table to when? Our next meeting, okay, which will be in August.
Second.
So I have now a motion to table, seconded by Ms., by Mr. Wallahan, seconded by Ms. Brunel. All those in, I don't think there was. Not on a table. Can't discuss on a table. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so the motion passes, we're gonna go ahead and table, um, so that way. It's not that we're saying we're not supporting a resolution.
Correct.
We want to make sure that when we create a resolution, it is strong, it's got meat to it, and it's, people are taking it serious. And they know that what we're saying is because it's, we're looking at the student. At the child, that's what we're here for. It's not for us, it's for the children, it's for the student. And in the end, it becomes the community, right? Cause the communities was makes, the people are the one that makes the community thrive. All right, so with that said, Ms. Wilson?
I just wanna make a comment that it's, it's nice that, um, the committee is supporting this. And I, I, and I, I do believe that looking through, um, and getting the best language is in our best interest. So, you know, I, I think our community feels supported, um, our teachers who aren't supportive of the Thrive Act, our educators. All of the staff that are working in our schools, our families who are supporting of this, I think they've definitely heard. That we are in support of this, um, and that we're just, um, trying to, uh, find the right language to make sure we're hitting all the notes that we want to.
Great, thank you so much. And I definitely want to thank, um, but, oh, I'm telling you, I don't, can I just call you V? I want to thank you so much. It's like I get tongue tied, I have a speech problem.
Think of varsity or, uh, velocity, batsity.
Va, 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 city, okay.
Yeah.
I got that, I'll get that for the next one, all right. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening. Thank you, uh, Rachel as well for being here. Uh, it's great to hear from you guys and great to hear from those who were part of this movement and this creation.
Thanks very much.
And we look forward to supporting it.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. Good evening.
You too.
All right, so moving on, we're gonna go ahead into new business, Superintendent Receiver Reports. Um, I'm gonna pass it over to Superintendent Soto.
Yeah, so, um, as the agenda reads, everything underneath the Superintendent Reports Agenda Item is gonna be covered in. In my, uh, in my report with the exception of, uh, the Dean Tech Preparation of Population Growth. Which was not part of my, uh, report, that'll be a, a, a separate item, but. Um, the first item in my report is, is just a budget update. Uh, the last meeting that we had, we went through our balanced budget, balanced operating budget. Went through every single, uh, department and, uh, I appreciate all of the discussion with the committee. And, uh, uh, and questions, there were some follow-up, uh, follow-up questions that, that you all had, um, that we emailed. Uh, to you and to, in response to the questions that you had, um, and you had all asked, uh, that, you know, when, when we would be getting the book. Well, we, we did mail the budget book. It is about a hundred and forty-two pages. Um, and I really just wanted to take the opportunity to, to thank the entire finance team. Um, and thank the, all of our principals and department heads who put a lot of work. Our budget development process is not, you know, um, done in isolation. We, we actually work really closely with the principals and we work really closely with each department head to develop their budget. Um, so it's a very collaborative process, um, that, that is tightly aligned to our strategic plan. And represents about a hundred and twenty-two million dollars, uh, that we're spending this year. Is the third year of the, uh, implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Um, and, you know, I'm really excited with, with where we landed with resource allocation. And, uh, you know, the, the, there's gonna be a lot of change in our finance department, you know, we, uh, recently received. Um, you know, our, our CFO is moving on to another district and our budget director is also moving on to the private sector. So I just really want to thank them for their, their hard work, um, and dedication to Holyoke Public Schools. They've both been here. Um, for about seven years, so, um. Happy to address any questions that you might have.
Is there anyone, um, Ms. Wilson?
So I, I, I guess I'm confused because in a previous meeting you, you shared that we were not gonna have a chief financial officer. Uh, and yet in the, the, it does say that Aaron is the incoming chief financial.
Yeah, so.
Officer, so I'm just kind of confused by the fact.
Yeah, what I would, what I said in the last meeting was that we were, we were not gonna hire. No, we were not gonna back Phil Mickey's position. Um, and that Aaron was gonna assume, um, additional responsibilities in her current role, so. Um, since then, uh, you know, we, we quickly realized that, that, uh, that is not a good. Good path forward for Holyoke Public Schools. Um, you know, so, uh, the, the plan was, was built around the people that we had. And with, with another person on our finance team moving on, we do really need somebody there. Um, that can dedicate all of their, their time to, to, um. To the finance department and supporting the needs, so, um, the structure that, that you have in front of you was what we had. What, it represents the balanced budget, so the total numbers aren't gonna change. But I will be, I will be restructuring finance for sure, and, um, Aaron's not gonna be leading the finance department.
She is, she now will be?
She will not be leading, yes. As of a month ago, that was the plan. It was the plan with the existing team. Some members of that team are leaving, and now that, that is not a good plan. Uh, considering, you know, part of the, part of the reason I did that was to develop some internal capacity. With members of my team, get them ready, um, and, and that person is, is moving on to the private sector. Uh, so we need somebody focused on finance full-time, um, and, you know, uh, we, we realized that pretty quickly. Probably two weeks into that structure, that it was more work than, than like, somebody could just pick up extra work and do it. Um, I know, cause I did it when I was a CFO, I was, um, I was overseeing transportation. Payroll, facilities, IT.
There's a lot.
Food service, grants and budget management. Um, and, and when I, immediately when I became the superintendent, I decided to split it. Because I know what I went through for five years, I didn't want to put somebody else through that. Um, and that worked, uh, and then when we, you know, when, when we had some movement on, on our leadership team. I thought, you know, that it would be a good idea to develop some capacity in-house. And Aaron's just been an incredible leader that has developed leaders. Every single person that has worked for Erin Linville has become a strong leader. So, um, I, you know, I thought, we, we all thought it was a good idea to, to have her do that, but, um, now there's no team. So there's nobody to, I'm not gonna say there's no team, because we still have a couple of people on the team, but. Um, none that are interested in, in stepping into that role or being developed to step in that role. Um, so it didn't make, it doesn't make sense to continue with that plan, so we're gonna go out. Uh, I'm not gonna get a CFO because in my opinion, I, I, you know, a CFO would be overseeing multiple departments. Like when I had it, and like what we were planning for Erin, she was gonna do the enrollment. Communications and strategy departments and the finance departments. But, uh, we're gonna bring somebody in as an executive director of finance to really just focus on the finance department.
So I, I could just say, um, personally, I would have really expected that kind of shift. To be communicated with the school committee. And that shift in mindset from not having a CFO to having it be, you know, someone taking on responsibility. And now doing another complete shift, you know, I, I would appreciate, um, you know, a better communication on that in the future.
I try to communicate through the, the chair and the vice chair, so, um. I, I guess I would speak to the two of you and, and see how, how you want those communications to get to the full committee. Cause I did have conversations with both of them.
The initial shift was presented at the finance subcommittee meeting as well, not this part, but the initial.
Right, no, I'm just saying, right.
All right, so in recent, Mr. Collmore, I know you had a question on the, on the operating budget. Oh, you did? Oh, okay, that was quick, all right. Mr. Wallahan, I didn't want to forget. See, tried to remember.
Thank you, um, thank you for the budget, I, I, um, I know the, uh. Finance committee met, so, four, four times or five times about the year, just to kind of work out the kinks in it. Um, I know there's, um, money from the federal government, um, like, one more year left with that. When does that, when does that expire again?
Yeah, the, the third round of ESSER, ESSER three expires at the end of September. Next, next year, not this upcoming September. Um, so that, that was expressed as a theme throughout the entire, like, story of our financial picture is that. You know, we use that money to, to get us ready for implementation of SOA. And, uh, next year we'll have some decisions to make on like, based on how that funding was used over the last three years. What do we want to keep? What can we afford? What can we absorb into our operating budget? Um, using, using whether or not those, those investments are, are worth it.
And, um, just to kind of make sure the public knows that, uh, budget, total budget, um, eighty-eight percent. Is funded by the state, that true? Four percent is funded by the taxpayers.
Our general operating budget, yes, um, uh, of our foundation budget, that would be a fair statement. Um, but the city does kick in additional costs, um, which are included in here for transportation.
And, um, just to kind of follow up on your statement with, uh, when you were the CFO and you had all those hats to fill. I remember we're in here doing a presentation on air conditioners and putting in air conditioners. I went to Dr. Zric. Why is he doing air conditioner? Why is he putting it? Well, that's his job, that's his jobs, uh. I never bought that, okay, so I'm kind of glad that you're kind of farming out some of those responsibilities. I, I think the budget director should be focusing on, you know, the financing, not putting in, you know, certain size air conditioner. Tech school, which we're tearing down anyway.
It could work, you just gotta find somebody crazy enough to do it. And apparently I was that crazy.
My back is sore just thinking about that. All right, thank you for your help.
Are there any other questions, comments? I, I don't know if everybody, I'm sure everybody did read it, but now, um, how we're gonna start increasing. The school committee's work and involvement with the finances.
Want me to continue with?
Could you talk, oh, I thought you were done.
No, that was just the budget portion of it, okay? Yeah.
But I'm sorry, that part is not in here. I was looking before I spoke.
It's in the packet.
I know it's in the packet, but it's not part of your report. See? Okay.
It is, it is in the report. If it's in the packet, it's part of the report.
He always wants to argue, but anyways, so are you, but are you done with the budget operating?
I'm done with the. I'm not done with the superintendent's report.
Right, that part you're not.
Budget portion of it, I'm done with, yes.
So then, hold on. So, no objection, is there a motion to accept the receiver slash superintendent's fiscal year twenty-four operating budget? There's the motion, okay, who's gonna second? Okay, so I have got you there, um, with the motion, is there a second? And Ms. Tensley-Williams with a second, all those in fa, oh, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, it, also a part of, I just want to apologize for my voice. I lost my voice over the weekend. Uh, my son was playing in Hooplandia, which was an amazing tournament, and I was coaching him. Uh, we ended up losing in the finals, played twelve games in two days, so I did a lot of yelling. And I couldn't speak. Today's the first day that I could actually speak, so, um. Uh, I do have, uh, I, I did include in my report, uh, an update at the time. Uh, uh, which was before the MSBA meeting, an update on the middle school building. Uh, as many of you know, we, we did get the votes, uh, from, uh, unanimous vote from the city council, which I want to. You know, openly, which I have and will continue to openly express gratitude for their support and the building committee's. Uh, support under. Uh support under Erin Brunel's leadership. And we had a meeting with the MSBA as well, uh where they approved their portion of the funding, so. Um you know, a lot of work went into that and I really appreciate everybody involved. Our kids deserve this and they're finally going to get it. Um. There, the, uh as part of my report, there were two uh updates to um. I would say the employee handbook. Uh around incentive days and remote work. Um I'm not sure if anybody is aware, but the city uh under Josh's leadership. Um that he, he was able to increase uh some leave time for, for all of the non-bargaining folks down in the. The um, down at city hall and, and once that happened. We, we wanted to make sure that we also remain competitive with, you know, with what city hall did and tried to remain consistent, so. One of the things that uh, you know, we did. And want to do uh starting July first is that every, every employee. Uh that is not part of a, a, a collective bargaining agreement. Will receive four additional um. Incentive days per year that they could use. Only during the vacation months, so the February vacation and during the Fourth of July week. So it's really to, to try to be competitive with what the, what the city, city hall was doing and with other communities are offering. Um and, and I know that it, it will be received well by all of our staff. Um who don't really get a ton of vacation time, especially if you s- you start, if you're new. It takes you a while to get any type of vacation. Um and I know from experience, anytime I run into anybody. And I tell them I work for the school department, the first thing they ask is, oh, do you got to work during the? School vacation? Do you got to work during the summer? And I'm like, yes, I do. So this gives them at least four days that, additional days that they can only use during that time and it won't count towards their sick time. Um the remote work policy, um since the pandemic, we've been pretty. I would say that, that we haven't really officialized a policy around it. Or expectations, each department head may have been doing. Um something different and our HR department. And um our leadership team has been communicating to staff that we are going to be formalizing something. A process on, on remote work from home. Uh for different groups, so in this process, it lays out what the groups are. But essentially what it translates to is one day per pay period, so we have twenty-six pay periods. Um uh those gru- and you know, and it's, and it specifically says who would be eligible and who wouldn't be eligible. Um you know, there's some work that can't be done from home, right? Like that's, that's just the reality. There's work that cannot be done remotely. And then there are some, some um employees that, or groups that, that, that it could be. Uh we learned that through the pandemic, you know, that it could be done and it could be done effectively. So the official, uh what we, what we landed on. Was that one day per uh per pay period, which translates to about uh twenty-six. So within a two-week period, an employee would be able to use that. Um there's, there's a lot of language in there, it's included in your packet, but essentially that's what those two. Those two uh policies were and I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they're both in there.
It's, is that a draft?
Yes, that, that's what we're starting July first. I am open to any feedback. Um you know, that, you know, we, we will, we have communicated. To staff that this is uh, we're calling it a pilot, so it's not like. You know, it's subject to, to change. We want to see how it works. See what, what uh kinks need to be worked out and what. Uh what things that we, we need to adjust, but um definitely open for feedback.
Is there any questions? Mr. Collmar?
You said four periods. At the end of the four periods, there's anything left over, they can't use it up again?
No, it's, it's for, for the four incentive days. Um it's use it or lose it. But it's only use it during those, we want to encourage people, look, I'm a workaholic and I know a lot of people that are. That are like that and if you let them, they'll just continue to work and not use any of their time. Um so we really do, you know, care about the mental well-being of our staff and the wellness. And we want to encourage them to take time, especially during those periods where, you know, the Fourth of July week, there's not a lot going on during the school vacation weeks. Um we want to encourage uh people to use their time and take a break. But if they don't use it, they, they lose it.
Any other questions? I do have one on this remote work tele. Telecommu- telecommuting expectations pilot program.
Yeah.
This is for every employee? In the district?
No. So.
Okay, so it's specific ones?
Specifically, like we, we actually have a list by job class in there that you could click on the link. And see, you know, some um. Uh and you could see what groups it's applicable to. It wouldn't be applicable to anybody in a collective bargaining agreement because that would have to be negotiated with the union. But it's, it's pretty much all non-bargaining staff. But like you can take a look. When you click on the link here, by job class, which, what, what the rules are for each.
Okay, so currently we just have one, right? That the majority is remote, one employee. We only have one.
This is a policy. There are exceptions to the policy.
Okay.
And that's spelled out in here too, so like.
Okay.
If there are special circumstances, like a separate contract with an individual employee, that would be an exception to this policy.
Okay.
Then there's a process that you would have to go through for that.
Okay.
And we spell out that process in here, so. Um exceptions, that would be number seven.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um. Also included in the. Also included in the um. In the superintendent report was an update on chronic absenteeism. Um you know, we did see a ten-point improvement from the previous year, which is good. Uh down to forty-three percent, but that's still way too high. Pre-pandemic, we were uh under, a little under thirty, so we'd like to see that continue to decline, but. Um yes, there was a ten-point. Uh improvement in chronic absenteeism. We also included a list of all the extent, the summer programs that we have in there. I'm not going to go through. Each of them individually, because there's quite a few, but that, that information is included in your packet along with. You know, some enrollment information and, and what's going to be covered in each program. Um. I did include a memo as part of my report that was emailed over and mailed to you. On increasing the involvement of the school committee. Uh on, in finances, it's in uh. Uh you know, I had an opportunity to sit down. With uh with Mildred and with Josh to go over this in detail and it is included in your packet. But essentially what we're talking about is, is really committing to receiving uh bi-monthly finance updates a year. Um we could set up a process next year where, where warrants could be uh viewed. Monthly, um so you know, our staff would have to make sure. That, that we have warrants available for any school committee member or designee that would want to go, take a look at them. Um I, I would like to work with the committee to make sure we have the, the right dates so that our staff, especially being short-staffed right now. Um so that our staff are, are ready to, to prepare those and set those aside for review. Um you know, reviewing high-level. Uh high-level accounts like out-of-district tuition, transportation and assessments. Uh on a quarterly basis. And then um, you know, one of the things that we also talked about is. Um any grants, any large grants, large expenditures and donations received. Uh you know, giving an opportunity for the um, for the school committee to take a look at those as well, so. I'd love to be able to work with the chair of the, the finance subcommittee, if that would be the desire of this body. To, to come up with a process for that. And then in terms of specific approvals, you know, reviewing large contracts over a hundred thousand dollars, which is the threshold that the state uses. For uh bidding, they, they recently upped that from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. So we, we just thought it would be smart to tie that to chapter thirty B. And then uh you guys have already started to see this in your, on the agenda, reviewing any new student activities. Or any out-of-state field trips. Um I've been reviewing those, but I'm happy to include those in the packet as part of regular reviews. Um and that's, you know, again, in a, an attempt to just get the school committee involved a little more in, in our day-to-day financials.
Are there any questions? Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you for the update. And most of these items we've um discussed. I know, the mayor spoke with some of the items. Uh. Policy committee discussed a lot of these things. Who's going to sign the warrants? How many people signed the warrants? That was kind of bantered back and forth. We didn't have a really. Right or wrong answer on that, or what's best for the committee, what's best for the, for the school department. So some of the things, there's no right or wrong answers, it's just what makes sense.
Yeah.
We were meeting monthly anyways at one time, we had to cancel one of the meetings. So um some of these items that I've been doing. As a part of, of the process, but it's good to have it in writing. It's good that uh one state wants us to get more involved, wants us to get more involved, and the mayor wants us to get, wants us to get more involved, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia?
Wanna, wanna s- send this to. Finance. Call it.
What do you want to do? The.
Is it?
Took memo dated June twentieth.
Want to send a memo to?
Yeah, well, I, what I want to do is make a motion that we forward to the finance committee. Not just the memo, but some sort of motion that allows the finance committee. To work with the superintendent, the working group to. I don't know, but what would we call it? To, to draft. And bring back to the body. An agreement, right?
A memorandum? No, or are you talking about like a policy of who's going to sign the warrant, who's going to view it?
Superintendent Soto is, is, is presenting here are, is an idea of options around finance. Of how he wants to engage the school board more. With some of the decisions like dollar amounts of grants and any of the points he just made. So I'm trying to figure out, what I want to do is forward this to the finance committee so we can work with them to draft. Agreements of how the school board can work more closely with, you know what I mean? But I don't know how I, how I want to word it.
Ms. Wilson?
Be more of a memo of understanding. Cause it's really, yeah, I, I think it'd be more of kind of like that, just an understanding, like going forward, this is what we're going to do.
I know, but.
And that would be like just an understanding because it's, it's. Not binding per se, but it's just a memo of understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh so how do, how do we craft that motion?
Sir. Go ahead.
I could, I would just recommend that this memo be sent to finance subcommittee for discussion and. An opportunity to.
Create.
To review and amend as, as the. Recommend, but I, I can't make a.
Right.
Okay, so the motion that Mayor Garcia is looking to do is to recommend to refer this ma-
Yep, to recommend to refer the uh memo of increasing school committee's involvement in finance work to the finance subcommittee. And develop a memo, a memorandum of understanding about how the school committee's involvement. Will increase with the finance work of the district.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
So all I'm looking for, um Jay, in the finance committee, that you guys draft the MOU. And eventually bring it back to the school board as a recommendation for this body. To review and approve, we might send it back with some questions or whatever, but, or amend. But if you guys can be the official working group on that. So we can get rolling on how, you know, our level of involvement with the school district and its finances.
Mr. Collmar?
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly what you're saying, but I think uh after it's done with policy, I mean with uh finance. For it to policy, to make, to make it a policy.
We can't make it a policy. Right, right now, it, it's like creating a policy under receivership. We, it's not like we can really make a, a decision. He's working with the state to get us more involved. This is like. Like a pilot program. Let's call it that, a pilot program. Let's see how we do, right? Um but it's not something where it's going to tie in and be like that we have. A decision-making in this. So creating a policy, we already have policies on governance, we already have our policies on what we're going to do. When we're out of receivership and how the process is. You know, for warrants and for all that stuff, so. Really can't create a policy on this. It's just like a, um, uh, yeah, it's like.
Understanding.
Memorandum of understanding, you know, he wants us more involved. We, we want to be more involved, right? Um and they're willing to, to work with us on that, so that's great and that's what we're going to do, that's all, all it is. So with that. No further discussion on that, uh Ms. Brunel?
It just seems to me like um. We're adding a formality to something that doesn't need a formality. Like you said, we can't make new policies, so we're voting on a memorandum, on a motion. That we really have, like, we have no voting rights. So to me, the whole making a motion in the memorandum just seems like mute because. We are still a district under receivership and though we're asking and it's being given, I don't understand why it needs to be formalized. Um to me, that doesn't seem necessary, that's just my two cents. I will still vote to approve it because obviously these are steps that. We want to be taking, but just to be clear, like, the formality, I don't think is necessary.
Ms. Wilson?
And I would respectfully disagree. I would say the formality is somewhat needed for being clear on expectations. For both what's going to be shared and, you know, and, and what type of a timely manner. I, I just think that that's kind of more of a. You know, getting those training wheels per se on, on our, you know, bicycle as we go and just have that continuity. And know that what's expected and when by both, by all parties involved in this.
Mr. Wallahan and then Mayor Garcia?
Real quick, yeah, um thank you for the comment, um you know, um. I think, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I think he's had some conversations with the state, in terms of what they're looking for. From, from our. Maybe just to kind of. Out of the state that we're in, so I, I think. For formal. Uh agreements and accountability from our. Committee, so we can show the state.
Mayor Garcia?
Oh yeah, that, that's it, I mean. Brunel is right, we. There, it is moot, right, because we don't have control and it's just recommendations um and whatnot, but. There's no path forward officially to transitional local control, but we've been taking steps. Good faith steps um to show that we're capable. Um and that we're interested in learning how to gain local control, so it's almost like. We're creating our own path and hitting the ground running, um but. Uh uh Wallahan's right, I, you know, conversations informally with commissioner, sharing with them that. Our interest and desire to want to learn, but we need something um to, to put into practice so we can learn. And so he linked up with the superintendent here and thought, brainstormed some ideas. And they came forward with this in the area of finance, because this is probably the most critical part in our um. you know, our participation in making decisions for the school district. So if we can, just not anything different than Ellie Willis, Representative Willis, Wilson, Wilson, when she made the first step in wanting to get more involved in policy. And you remember when I made comments about how happy I was to see that effort? We do, we need to start moving. We need to start planning and moving and, and, and working with the superintendent and trying to figure out what this transition looks like on our own. And, you know, as folks, as he reports back to the folks of the Commonwealth, what he's been doing, working with us in some of the initiatives, we've kind of just been taking on our own. Show some effort in what we're trying to achieve here in the city of Holyoke. So Ms. Brunel is right. It is moot, right? Because we don't have control or say or whatever the case, but the flip side of that coin is it shows initiative. So.
Ms. Tensley-Williams, and after that, we're going to go with the vote.
Mayor Garcia, are you trying to say that you want us to be on one accord and there's no division? You want to show the state that we're a group and we agree? That what you're trying to show that we're all involved?
I think we've been showing the state that, but yeah, absolutely. I mean, the first sign of good faith here is how collaborative this body has been with the receiver.
Yep.
Since day one, actually, we've never really consistently met with the superintendent and that's good. But also, you know, the charting the course we just recently completed. Trying to understand and learn what the responsibilities of the school boards are taking some responsibility in the effort. And then now also putting things into practice to show that we're, we're able to work with the state in this initiative to try to be better so that when we do get control, we're ready to hit the ground running because we've been putting it into practice. So it just looks really good. But either way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we already have a motion. We already have it seconded. So all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Okay. Was there anything else?
The only other thing in the packet is the memo that I had sent about expanding the pilot for the Yonder Bags next year. So that those will be rolled out at the middle and high school levels. You guys remember, we had brought this to the committee earlier in the year and we were piloting Holyoke Middle School and STEM. Those pilots went really well despite, you know, a lot of the anxiety around it. And it wasn't perfect, you know, that, but overwhelmingly, we saw student engagement was up. Saw a lot of less friction with staff around like the use of phones and things like that. And, you know, based on how well the pilot went, we are moving forward with rolling it out to middle and high schools. The high school is actually starting with summer school at the North Campus. So, you know, it was a slow gradual process. We, you know, we wanted to try it out for ourselves, see what worked, see if it had an impact on the student learning environment. And we thought it went well and are going to be moving forward next year with rolling out, expanding that pilot to, to middle and high school.
Mr. Wallahan?
Real quick, thank you. Yeah, just, the media's been reporting that similar programs are being set up in Springfield and Chickaby. They're being well received there.
Yeah, they rolled that, they rolled out Springfield and Chickaby rolled it out at their high schools starting last year. So we were able to, as part of our pilot, go visit to see how the staff were implementing. Brought some students over to talk to other students to see how they liked it. What's been, recently what's been in the media is I was actually at the board meeting, last board meeting at Desi. And the state is really getting behind this. So like the state is actually offering incentive to districts, like grants, that are interested in piloting a program like this. Not necessarily just the Yonder Bags, but, you know, anything that would assist in, in, you know, limiting the use of cell phones in schools. Because what I learned when I went there is there were like seven different districts that were doing it and they were all doing something different. Only one of the districts was using the Yonder Bag. Some of the other ones, they had like a cubby corner where kids would just put their phone in a cubby when they walk into class and then they get it when they leave the class. We felt that the Yonder Bag was, was, you know, a little easier to manage. But look, I'm not going to sit here and say it was perfect, right? Kids, you know, got a little smart. Some kids brought two phones, so they had one in their Yonder Bag and they had one hidden somewhere else. So like, we're going to have to continue to work through the challenges that come up. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Kennedy?
I know that, I didn't really give a big, I gave just, last time this came up, I just kind of had a whole bunch of word vomit that you guys all had to piece together, which is usual with me. But just a quick show of hands here, when you guys walk into your offices, how many of you have your phones taken from you? Show of hands? No one? How many of you have a problem with using your phones when you're at work? Okay, that didn't go in my way, but that's My point being, this is a building where you go to learn how to function in the real world. This building in particular is how you go and learn to function in the real world. And what the Yonder Bags are doing, the elementary school, middle school, I understand, but what the Yonder Bags are doing is they're taking away the discipline of learning what happens if you have your phone out at work? If you take your phone out at work and you get caught, you get written up, you get terminated, all that stuff. This school in particular is supposed to prepare you for the workforce. This is not preparing us for the workforce. This is in no way preparing us for the workforce. It is doing the exact opposite, is taking away that discipline. Just like when I am in shop and I miss a step in my skills, I mess up here so that I don't mess up in the real world. So that is kind of my thoughts. It's kind of taking away the discipline of what you, you know, what you're supposed to learn here to avoid there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Brunel?
I can't help but be curious, though. Kids, I mean, let's face facts. Kids are not being disciplined like they should be throughout the entire district. So whether it's over a phone, whether it's over attitude, not doing work, disrupting the class, and that is another direct problem with receivership. We need numbers to be where they need to be. I know some people aren't going to like me saying this, but it's facts. I know students, teachers, staff at high school levels that complain about this all the time. So this is the solution they came up with. Teachers tell me all the time how distracting cell phones are. I mean, personally, my kids are not allowed to bring it to school. So for our household, it's not really an issue, but if it was as simple as discipline, trust me, that would have been the solution. But we don't discipline. I don't see it.
Ms. Wilson?
So working at a vocational school, I work at a vocational school. So I do see, the difference that I see in a vocational school is that you can get dinged on your points for career readiness. Is how that is really dealt with where, you know, in the district I work with. But on the other hand, I think I'm heading in the direction of supporting the Yonder Bag more so than before because I do see the fact that our students, it has become their go-to because of COVID. They got that immediate feedback twenty-four seven when they were out of school. And this is a tool, a tool to help them not be so addicted to their phone. So they're always looking at it, always, you know, being, you know, yeah, really just being entertained by it and ding, 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 ding. I think, though, that it's also an education for our parents because many times students are saying, well, my parent is the one messaging me. My parent is the one emailing me or texting me. And I think that that's also the fact that we need to realize that it's not just our students. It's family members who are also contributing to the use of phones during the school day. But I do hear what you're saying about you do need to, everyone needs to learn how to manage the use of their cellphone and you're kind of not having that opportunity per se. So I do hear that, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy?
Ms. Brunel, I do completely agree with you that we don't have discipline and we should have discipline. But that is my point, is if we need to, like, I've, quite frankly, I have seen students get away with far too much. And that's not, that's something that needs to be worked on in the school. And that's something that you need, that the state or our committee needs to work with school administrators to actually put policies in place because when someone, when a I don't know, when a school leader walks by and says, put your phone away a thousand times a day, that's not going to do anything. So we need to set procedures. We should have set procedures in place and added the discipline instead of skipping right to this solution, in my opinion.
Thank you. Oh, okay. So I'm going to go with Mr. Rivera Cologne and then we're going to go ahead and move forward because I do want to get report from Mr. Kennedy and we still got a long way to go.
Just really quick, I spoke about this last time. So I understand and see your point one hundred percent. And again, just like I said before, I see the value of the Yonder Bag. Everything that we do in a school has to be a learning opportunity. Maybe thinking about how could we use this in a way that then teaches the students not to need the Yonder Bag? Like, I understand the purpose of doing it here, but what is the plan? What are other measures that can be taken in order for not needing them anymore? Because again, it is taking away a development for the students to understand what they need to do and how to do it. Everything should be a learning opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to go ahead. Now, before I go and move into the student report, there was one agenda item that was put in here on the request of Ms. Wilson. So if you want to, yep, you said Dean Tech Preparation for Population Growth. He did talk about it.
I apologize for that one.
That's okay. Went through all that stuff. So you brought it up because I want you kind of explain.
So I just feel as though, I think over the past ten years or so, our district has been very focused on academics. And I think while, and I just want to make sure that we have the proper staffing and technology and academic tools to support our students at Dean Vocational, considering that I expect that we're going to be upping, you know, the numbers at that school within the next couple of years. And I think, you know, our students deserve, you know, updated materials. You know, so I'm just looking to get an update as to where we are with that, seeing that the focus has always been more on the reading and writing and mathematics.
I mean, I you're right, there's been a lot of focus on academics and especially in this year around strengthening core instruction. And I think that that has been a problem for many years in Holyoke is very low expectations for our kids and not teaching them at grade level. And that's something that we need to continue, need to continue to believe in our students, continue to teach them at grade level and strengthening core instruction. But I don't think anybody has supported Dean more than, 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 than me, you know. We, and I'm not going to say nobody has supported Dean, but like, Dean has been a focus of mine for the last two years. We've invested millions of dollars in equipment already and we just approved probably another million dollars in equipment to make sure, and staffing, to make sure that Dean has the right amount of staffing to support the students that we have. And to make sure that the equipment being used and the resources being used in all of our shops is what our students are going to experience when they get out in the real world. Because, you know, it's needed, you know. But in terms of growing Dean, we have no plans right now to expand enrollment until we get the new middle school. Once we get the new middle school, we could, we could potentially expand. My focus is going to be on strengthening what is currently there right now before we start expanding. Because I do not want to see poor quality of, 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 you know, instruction around, you know, vocational, the existing shops that we have. I want to see that get strengthened before we start thinking about other, you know, other shops or other vocational programming. And I do want to let the committee know that expanding Dean and increasing the enrollment of Dean, you have to consider the impact on the North Campus as well. So we're completely driven by enrollment, our funding, right? So if we increase Dean by a hundred students, that's a hundred students that would normally be at the North Campus. And that's programming that, you know, we would have to, there would be an impact. And I would say, yeah, that really is. The kids that are on the waitlist right now, they're not in other communities. They're at Holyoke High because they didn't get into Dean. So yes, there's opportunities to bring others from other communities, but we would serve our community first. There's enough kids that are at Holyoke High right now that want to go to Dean and there's no space. But I just, I'm not saying we're not going to do it, but I want all of you to be prepared that when we do decide to make a decision like that, that it is going to have an impact on the North Campus and what we're able to do at the North Campus with the resources.
Ms. Brunel?
I guess I'll start with that comment. I respectfully somewhat disagree. Obviously, you know the numbers more than me, but I can't help but think that a robust curriculum at Dean, a stronger, more robust curriculum at Dean, more opportunities at Dean would obviously bring in kids from across the valley. I mean, I know kids from many other communities that choice into Westfield Voke and Smith Voke and Chickaby Comprehensive. So I think if we had the caliber that those schools have, we would certainly see more students. I think we also see students opt out for high school that we might not be considering, that maybe just go to Hampshire or a different community. So while I agree, it will see some less students from Holyoke High. I don't think it will be a hundred percent ratio. And then, you know, to that other point, the whole, one of the reasons we're bolstering our middle school programming is to start to regain enrollment. We, you know, we're seeing increased numbers finally starting to rebound from COVID, our continued dedication to the dual language program. We're going to start to see hopefully numbers go up. So by the time we get there, you know, I understand what you're saying and we need to prepare. But the reason I asked to speak and what I was going to question is, isn't there some kind of advisory committee at Dean regarding like shop and what do you call it when you go to work? Co-op?
There's a vocational council or committee that meets on a monthly basis. You know, that we do have some community or business partners. Jordan's been really supportive in getting people to the table to talk about the future of Dean and redesigning a plan for the next five years.
It seems like that would be a wonderful place for a school committee representative. If, you know, I'm a little full with school building committee right now, but it seems like that would be something a school committee member should be sitting on and reporting back to the full body. And then as things develop and we come up with a plan, like maybe there's an actual vocational studies subcommittee at some point. I don't know, but, you know, this is a district with a vocational and academic school. To your point, moving forward, we need to be more involved with that aspect. So whether it's somebody serving down that committee and where do we go from there, but that would be a start. Thank you. Thank you.
So, we're gonna go ahead and move on and I'm gonna get a report from, uh, Mr. Kennedy for the Holyoke High School Dean Campus.
Uh, thank you, sorry, apparently I was unexpected today, which makes sense, it's fair, um, it's summer. Um, but just have a quick few updates. Um, Carpentry is still building a school, school store that opens opportunities up for all nine CTE programs to sell merchandise and, or provide merchandise to sell and promote the school spirit. Uh, the district celebrated the 29th Annual Rising Star Program on Thursday, May 20, 25. Congratulations to our 9th grader Alicia, our 10th grader Israel, our 11th grader Christian and our 12th grader Kiara for their accomplishments, um, this year. Quickly to co-op updates, uh, Auto Collision has still continued to lead the way with a total of, um, uh, as of getting this report, a total of six 11th and 12th graders out working. Um, 21 students have been placed or found co-op positions and workplace. This is pretty good. Um, all juniors that were out in co-op this year, uh, have been offered their position to work through the summer, which is very good. Um, and as usual, if you know any business, any, um, businesses that are looking to partner and get involved with our school, please reach out to Savannah Hennessy or Chris Kelly. If you'd like, I can send out their emails, um, so they can get involved because it's very important to get local businesses to get students out working. And Student Government held its end of year retreat on June 21st. We were treated to a continental breakfast buffet. We discussed many topics and ways, um, for each club and grade level, um, to be equitable in fundraising and engaging school-based themes and monthly activities. And last, but absolutely not least, um, 135 9th and 10th grade students have earned their OSHA 10 certifications. Um, it is a Dean first to have that many students, um, get certified in all one year. Um, and we hope everyone has a restful summer, enjoy your month off and, yeah, that's it. Thank you for working.
That's amazing, thank you so much. Um, Ms. Merr Garcia? Thank you, thank you. And I hope you're gonna be here, um, for August?
Uh, yes, I will be working, I will be here next year, but I will slowly be weaning off and introducing a new person as I am going into my junior year. So, we need to find a new permanent representative.
We're gonna miss you.
I'll still be here most of the time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy. We're, okay, we can do that. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to ongoing business. So, real quickly, chronic absenteeism update, middle school building update, that was in your report, it's just an FYI, if you had a chance to read it, are there any questions? Dean, no questions, we're gonna move on to update from policy subcommittees. We have the policy subcommittee, um, Ms. Wilson.
So, um, we have reviewed, um, and, um, I don't believe there's been any significant changes made after, uh, we submitted for our receiver to review. Um, so we'd like to post for public comment in order to adopt the update of CHD, um, you know, uh, policy for absences, CHC, regulation dissemination and CH, policy implementation.
Okay, so is there a motion to recommend for the receiver to accept and post those following, um, policies on the website for public comment?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Brunel, seconded by Mr. Colomore. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Next one?
So, um, so the next ones are, we're bringing to, uh, the full committee in order to have it be sent to the receiver for review. So, the yonder bag, um, quickly, um, we wanted to just make some, uh, minor adjustments because we wanted the policy to be, uh, written for longevity. So, we wanted to remove the references of specifically referring to Springfield and Chickaby, um, as well as list the positive outcomes rather than leading with negatives, um, as to the why. So, um, and then, uh, making it a gender neutral, um, by using the term "they." I'm sorry, you don't have copies of these, um...
I was just gonna mention that, so these are the ones you want us to look at to see if we recommend for the receiver to review and it would have had the amendments on there, like, telling us how you would have amended it?
Right, and that's what, so I just summarized it, how we just, so we just made some minor adjustments because this is a policy, it's not a procedure, uh, I'm sorry. It's a procedure, not a policy, so it has, it is within the right of, um, out of this body to be created as far as a yonder bag. So, this would just be a recommendation.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, because now we're looking at all the policies that are here. So, being, for you to go through each one and to tell us where you would have made those changes, it's, this is just my opinion, um, it's gonna be hard to process and kind of figure out.
Yes, it is.
So, not for me to make the recommendation in the sense of moving, you know, I'm just gonna put it out there, is it something that we may want to bring back to the August meeting, um, where we could have it in the packet so that everyone could see the, the amendments and the changes?
So, we're, right now, we're just making the recommendation for the receiver to review it. We are not adopting the policy changes. So, this still allows us time to review it and make any changes along the way. All we're doing now is we're saying that we're sending it to the receiver for review.
Review with whatever you've put in there for amendment?
Right.
Okay, so those we can't see, that's what I'm saying. You guys, so do we have a motion to suspend the rules and allow Ms. Garcia to speak?
So moved.
Second, anyone? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously, Ms. Garcia, go ahead.
I think what Ellie's gonna say is, these were included in the last packet for you guys to review and now it's at the stage that it's going back to the receiver to adopt. So, it's at its final stage, we've already gone through those, right? Those are the beginning.
Well, we're talking about all the, um, DA, we're talking about all the ones.
Finan?
No, we're, yeah, we're talking about all of those. So, we've already moved through the CH, which we've already reviewed and gone through. I guess the concern is, is that, um, it was not included in the packet, all of the recommendations for the changes, and so you're feeling blinded by what you're being asked to recommend. That is what I'm hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we revisit this at our next meeting and in advance of the meeting, we get written copies of the recommendations so that way we can review them in advance and be able to say, like, full-heartedly that we support the review.
So, I do want to clarify, if I can speak, sorry, thank you, that it is very, so it would be very difficult to track every single change that we have made. I, I, in our minutes, I create a summary of, like, the, um, purpose and what, like, some overview of what the changes are. Um, I do have the minutes and that's why I was gonna read them as we went along to each one. Um, but I do understand, I would not feel comfortable as well if I didn't have copies necessarily in front of me. And so, I do understand that. Um, I will work on creating a way.
Or maybe if we at least have a copy of the minutes to review the thought process?
Receiver, Superintendent Soto.
I, I don't think you're giving yourself enough credit because Ellie does a really good job at, here's the old policy, here's a new policy, and it should be very easy to, to just read it and, and see what it is. So, I don't think it would be, like, the way you've structured it is really good. Old policy, new policy. If you read it, you, you'll, you'll understand, like, what the, what the changes are.
Okay.
And I think you, your subcommittee went through it in detail, right? So...
Yeah, we've gone through all of them in detail, yes.
I think what maybe would be, and I don't, I don't know if I'm making a recommendation, but are all school committee members invited to the policy subcommittee? Or it, or is all the committee members gonna be reviewing every policy or are they delegating that to the subcommittee? You know, I don't know.
So, at the end, it becomes a whole body that then would vote on a policy. And again, going back to the fact that we are under receivership and we got that, but we want to make sure that our policies are at least up to date, right? And that they're meeting, uh, the current state federal changes and standards, whatever.
Correct.
So, although technically, no matter what we say, it's gonna come out the way it's gonna come out, right? Until, see that we didn't want something in there, right? But then, if the, if it said that it's not, that's not gonna be included or it is gonna be included, bottom line is, is that we still all have a voice in it to recommend for the receiver to put up. It's not that we come to the policy subcommittee and make the decision there as a whole because then that's a school committee meeting.
Right.
It's not a policy subcommittee meeting. And we would each have to be, um...
I got it.
You know, acknowledged to be able to speak. One moment, Ms. Tensley Williams. I'm just saying that, again, and, and, and I'm sure you get it, Ms. Wilson, but others may not.
I do, I understand completely. That's why I said I'm happy to do it.
That part, and then I'm seeing DEC, no current HPS policy, federal fund supplement, not supplement, policy.
Correct.
Okay, supplant policy, supplant policy. Okay, no current HPS policy, so, so what is that? Am I just gonna say, okay, yeah, go right ahead, but I didn't have it?
No, I understand completely, be happy to share that and I'll be happy to share the minutes as well, so you have...
Which you've done before.
Right, but I'm happy to share it, that's not a problem whatsoever. I can understand it.
Meeting minutes, were those the ones that we approved already before or those aren't even here to, to, to go through, right?
I would have to look at that, to be honest with you.
All right.
But the one, there is a policy I do think that, um, needs to be brought up to the full, um, body here, and it's DGA, and that is the, uh, authorized signature. Um, this is a policy, um, it's a new policy, um, to our district. Um, sometimes policies have been, uh, split out. And so, this is a policy that, um, talks about who can sign the warrants in the procurement, with the procurement process. And so, the reason why I, I would like to have you just think about this is that, um, this policy does speak to who would be allowed to sign, um, keeping in mind that, uh, the mayor and the school committee chair sign all warrant, warrants as part of the procurement process. Um, but it's important to note that we want to keep it timely, so we have the option of deciding who will be able to. Our subcommittee did, uh, discuss that the school committee designates members of the finance subcommittee or the vice chair to be responsible for the review and approval. And that way, it's a robust enough group, um, that we're never going to delay someone, um, from going through a procurement process for something that we need, since if we, when we do move out of receivership, this will be on a weekly basis that people will be signing warrants. So, it's just a conversation, uh, piece for to think about.
Ms. Brunel?
Is there not an established in the rules somewhere that the finance, members of the finance policy subcommittee sign the warrants?
No.
Oh, because we did before, so I just was figured it must have been in existence.
No.
Okay, um, but just to backtrack, we do have a motion on the floor that we didn't do anything with, which was to table all of this until we have it in writing for review and then to bring back. So, we just kind of went off on discussion and didn't...
Thank you, Ms. Brunel.
Do anything.
There a second?
There doesn't have to be.
What did you say to, oh, second?
No, I said we just didn't do, we just moved on.
I have a comment. Sorry, so now I'm having a Ms. Wilson moment, I must have not paid attention to that part. Okay, well, at, there's a motion to table, so there is no discussion. And we ended up getting, uh, a second on it, so I can't move forward with that one.
Well, I had a comment before they spoke. I raised my hand.
Right, but, so, the motion should have been taken up before Ms. Wilson's comment either. Just had a meeting about rules and procedures and we need to stick to rules and procedures.
Yep. All right, so with the motion that, to table, and it's only this part, the second portion, which is the recommendation to send to the receiver, and this is, the motion was to table till the next meeting. Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Okay. We're gonna move on with any report from the finance subcommittee?
No, um, I'm gonna have the minutes ready for you for the next meeting. They're 99% done.
For which meetings?
The next meeting.
I know, I know when the next meeting is. Which meetings?
No, no, yeah, you're not interested in the question.
Which meetings?
Our last meeting that we met.
Okay, that's the one that I'm asking, what was the date?
I'll look it up.
All right, just let me know, thank you. Um, do we have any report, report from the Joint City Council School Committee?
Yeah, I reached out to the, uh, city council, uh, secretary, they just had one thing added to the jacket, so we're looking to try to schedule a meeting. Um, he said even though when they're on recess, it doesn't affect subcommittees, uh, so we will be meeting at some point before September. I'll let you all know.
Thank you very much. Um, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee from the Chair, Ms. Rivera Cologne.
We haven't met as a subcommittee, but we did meet with, um, the HPS Equity Task Force twice. We had that opportunity to participate in the family handbook. Um, we also talked about how it was a great start and really focusing, building partnerships with families. And that is also a first pass that is not gonna be done, we, we have a lot of stuff to do. One of the things that I wanted to highlight personally is the fact that, um, the things about discipline are in the same section about the things about safety, and that's something that probably shouldn't be together because if you're looking for something like domestic violence and you're gonna be under something that is delineating punitive things about different behaviors, it's not gonna make you feel safe to be able to read through the section to find what you're looking for. So, that's something that we talked about as well, and I have full confidence in Mr. Muggell, he's a great leader and he really makes sure that everybody's listened to and all the voices are heard, which is awesome. And we also talked about what did we wanted to see in him as a leader for his role or as an equity director? So, it was a great conversation and just a start-up for our next meeting, which we'll be doing soon.
Excellent, thank you very much. And there is nothing else, no out-of-state field trips, no student activities, so...
So, actually, I would like to do, uh...
Ms. Wilson?
From the policy subcommittee, I, I, I did want to, um, I'm not sure it's now where I speak to, um, do we want to schedule a meeting, um, in early August before, um, the policy subcommittee? We can work together to create a date so we can, okay, thank you.
Okay, so just send it out for us or for Ms. Garcia. Okay, with that being said, there's no, nothing further on the agenda, I wish everyone, uh, safe and happy summer. And now, we're gonna go ahead and move to announcements. So, I have Mr. Wallahan and then I have Mr. Colomore.
Thank you. Uh, the finance committee last met on May 11th. Those minutes for ASAP. There are no minutes in our packet for our last meeting, I don't know whether Sam's gonna be forwarding those to the new place.
So, Ms. Garcia will continue being here for the full committee. The subcommittee will be the other person that will be for the subcommittees, but Ms. Garcia will be here for the full committee. And so, for our last meeting, yes, I didn't see that we don't have it, but again, we still have... But again, we still have, it's three months worth, right? So please, two, three meetings, three meetings. So please make sure that for our next meeting in August that we have those. Mr. Collimore?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to MAS C and Glenn, and not just Glenn, but the whole staff for doing an excellent job preparing us for our next role.
That's great. Yes, so uh Mr. Collimore put in a motion that we send out a letter to MAS C thanking them, and we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. Okay, doo doo. Ms. Rosalie Tensley-Williams.
Today, I went to the barbecue kickoff. Um, it was very nice. So they, so they did a good job as far as the food is concerned. I got to see the new food truck, very nice. And the food was good, and I even saw a packet of carrots. So I think they're doing okay with the food, and they had fruit, um, watermelon, so it was very nice. Thanks for the invitation. Mrs. Soto.
Anything else? No? So everybody, you guys all have a safe summer. I'll see you back in August. Enjoy. Don't forget tomorrow evening is the fireworks, correct? It's still on? At Holyoke Community College. All right, thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at 7:45 PM. Thank you.